Okay, we can go back to where we have been. Okay, so next slide. Where we need to go, so as you all are aware, we have had some capacity concerns in our sewer basins, primarily the Shoal Creek Basin, so. When we, Charles and I and team, sat down discussing this wastewater management plan update and the previous plan, we had a lot of kind of major structural infrastructure updates planned. A lot of those were accomplished as we just listed. Some of them didn't come to fruition because they didn't need to after, you know, time went on, we discovered what was important, what's not. But what we do know right now is we have some issues facing us, one with capacity and two with some environmental factors, regulatory concerns. So the biggest thing on the list now and also one of the items that is an immediate issue that we are addressing that you have already approved some work towards is the Shoal Creek wastewater plant upgrade, which includes a decommission of the Blant Mill LAS. Next thing is sewer system rehabilitation, just where we, we know we have condition issues with the sewer system, we need to start addressing that on a regular basis, a scheduled basis, prioritize through conditions monitoring, inflow and infiltration abatement. That is something that will come out of our sewer model updates combined with data from our sewer flow monitoring program. And then capacity management is just the ongoing effort to manage our capacity in a way, in a proactive way, so we, you know, can maximize the use of our infrastructure. Steve, next slide, please. Okay, so how do we get there? These are objectives, just kind of listed out in a immediate mid-range, long-term order, immediately update our sewer models. Tonight, you'll be considering approval of TOF with Paragon and LGA to update our Shoal Creek sewer model. That's the one we want to focus on. Right off the bat, we, we have, we had our sewer moratorium that lifted at the end of this past year, as you all are aware. We are finding ways to creatively allow for development to happen within that basin. A lot of this basin resides in Spalding County area outside of the city of Griffin limits, and there's a lot of development wanting to happen in the commercial district, both residential and commercial. Immediately, we have to deal with the EPD consent order, Blant Mill LAS. We already have engaged a consultant for that subject matter experts with the lagoon system and LAS, and they're working on a corrective action plan that we must submit to EPD as part of that consent order in about the next 90 days, give or take. Sewer flow monitoring with ADS, again, that's been implemented since November, but it's an effort we want to continue annually with some iterations of INI analysis and some things. And as we go along with that mid-range, we want to discover what opportunities we have for inflow and infiltration abatement. That is, again, something that will be kicked off and begin with the sewer model updates. We need to know theoretically what our system looks like with some accuracy. So we've already discovered some errors with the previous sewer models that have been corrected, where we thought we had some situations happening in the basin that weren't actually completely accurate. So that's increasing the accuracy of our models. Plus, we have with the sewer flow monitoring program, we, it's a new day since the original models were created. So there's new data, our flow conditions have changed over the years. Next thing in mid-range, we have five years under EPD consent order to become compliant with the LAS issues, regulatory issues there and Shoal Creek wastewater plant. So we want to accomplish going to direct discharge with the Shoal Creek plant. That is the biggest ticket item on capital expenditures, as you'll see as we go on. Long-term, again, CMOM has capacity, maintenance, operations and management of the sewer system. It's best practices for sewer system operation and management. Slash asset management, our infrastructure is an asset and we want to maintain these assets as well as we possibly can with current technology and practices that are in place. And then renewal of aging sewer infrastructure, so that will be ongoing through with the tools of our sewer models and sewer flow monitoring program along with some one-off inspection efforts and conditions assessments. Steve, next slide. Yes?
I did not know we didn't look at our board for it. Is that pending of this update or is that?
No, so the moratorium was in place for a period of six months. It expired at the end of December this past year. We didn't renew, is what I should say. We didn't necessarily lift, we let it expire without renewing that moratorium. So what we have learned since we implemented the moratorium is that while we do have capacity issues in the Shoal Basin, we now know what we're doing with the plant. One of the biggest capacity issues with that plant was that it is currently treating on an average daily flow 80% of what it's permitted to treat. Not to mention, we know that our LAS is not performing. So any drop of wastewater you add to that just worsens that situation. So with that remaining 20% of capacity that was in the plant, you want to hold on to that until you know what you're going to do with the plant because of the, the treatment issues that come out of being maxed out. The process is just, it's hard for it to perform, right? So the rule, that EPD, not a rule, but the recommendation is that at 80%, you need to have a plan with a trigger pole to upgrade your plant when you're at 80% hydraulic capacity. So we're beyond that now. So we're releasing that capacity. We also since then have learned with help of Paragon, LGA, as we've been preparing and gearing up to do the Shoal Creek sewer model update, that some of the conditions from the model that was previously done, I believe that one was 2015, Charles? That's changed, and so we've corrected some things in the model. We do have capacity issues in the system, but not quite as much as we thought we did because now we also have the sewer flow monitoring program with real data that we're monitoring sewer as rainfall events are happening and we see beyond just the theoretical lens with a real world lens of what's happening in the system. So historically, these are the flows that, as they progress from 2005, this data goes back to the original wastewater management plan. Cabin Creek, and let me, let me explain something you see here because it looks like the flows are lessening, and they are. But a couple of factors that were happening there from '05 to 10 to 15 was water efficiency, water conservation. A lot of newer homes and older homes being retrofitted with fixtures that use less water, low-flow toilets, low-flow showerheads, et cetera, and that really makes a difference. So when that was being pushed really hard, we did see a decrease, but that's already climbed back up. And you can see it's, it's trending back up with, especially in the Shoal Creek Basin because of all the development. Next slide, please.
Graham, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of the previous slide. The 2005 to 2020 change, Canyon Creek goes, decreased 14%. Is that an average over the?
Yeah. So '05 to 10, and it's, okay, so the '05 to '20 change is the 1.64 to 1.41. And a couple of things you see there, there's two things at play. One, as I mentioned, water conservation efforts with manufacturing of low-flow fixtures. And two, the plant has been replaced, right? So we have newer flow monitoring tech at the plant that we're driving that data from. So more accurate, rule of thumb is flow monitoring at a treatment plant is plus or minus 10%. That's 14%, slightly outside that window. I think if you combine that with the, the conservation fixtures and all that are out at most houses these days, that probably explains what you're seeing there. Okay, so today's flows, and these are all with brand-new influent flow monitoring, or excuse me, not today's flows, projected flows. So it is projected from today's data into 2040 based on the land use method for flow projections, not just a population projection. So the previous management plan looked at population projection alone, but the use of water is greatly varies from industrial, commercial to residential. Residential is pretty steady, and it's only impacted by things such as water conservation advances with plumbing fixtures and just the patterns, you know, household size, that sort of thing. Land use method we find is a more accurate projection, and that's what we have here. So in the Cabin Creek Basin, we're projecting by 2040 to be at 1.17 MGD. The plant is rated for an average daily flow of 1.5 per month. Potato Creek, 3.64, it's currently rated at 3.0. So we will have a little bit of work to do in the future there, possibly. Shoal Creek, 4.43, it's currently at between 1.8 and 2.0. So in the Shoal Creek Basin, again, you see a huge jump there. That is again, and potato as well, that's because of land use. You see development out for Potato Creek Basin out towards 16. There's a potential for that development to, you know, come into the Potato Basin. Shoal Creek, it's the largest basin we have, a lot of development captured in that basin. We are planning the upgrade that we have already, feasibility study we've already completed a year and a half ago for the Shoal Creek plant. We've identified that we can increase capacity within the existing footprint of that plant to 5 MGD and potentially could go higher than that. But 5 MGD meets our needs for the projections that we see here, so that's the right choice. Next slide, please. So what exactly is influent infiltration? We have a bad habit in my line of work of assuming that everyone knows what we're talking about. Inflow and infiltration, and more specifically rainfall derived inflow and infiltration is water that's not supposed to be in our sewer system, but it's coming into our sewer system from rainfall events through cracks or just gaping holes. So in the brownish-green color there, you see inflow sources and labeled on the diagram. This is just, this is a very limited diagram, but it explains what the differences are. Roof drain connection, uncapped cleanout, you know, the big four-inch pipe in your yard with the cap on it, hopefully it's got a cap on it. If it doesn't, please go put one on it. It'll help you and us. That's where, when you have sheet flow or rain, you know, more times than not, that's going to be in a low-line area just because that's the way things happen, right? And when that water level in the ground rises above it, it just pours in. And when that happens multiple times over a system that has 11,000 connections, it's a lot of water. Infiltration sources, root intrusion, roots are pervasive. They work their way into the cracks and crevices of a sewer system, pipe joints, and they create a conduit. So when the roots get in, then they die, you've got a conduit for water to come into the system. You also have, sometimes these are the smoking gun situations where if we go out and did, say, a smoke test and we see smoke billowing out of a storm drain, we know that there's a cross-connection between the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer. So that's opportunities that we hope to find through inspections. And that's a source of inflow or infiltration. So also manholes, we've, we've lined, I think somewhere around 240 manholes, Charles, I think is what I quoted to you, 240 manholes, we've reconditioned and re-lined the inside of them. You see that manhole there, cracks, deterioration, that happens over time and that allows infiltration to come in. Next slide, Steve. Flow monitoring, so I wanted to, this is a visual representation of our flow monitoring system. This is a fantastic technology. Back in the day, it was our staff or someone we hired at great expense to go out and install sewer flow monitors that had to be checked regularly and, you know, the quality of what you're getting out of those were hit or miss. The tech has improved with companies like ADS. We're glad to have them here because it makes our lives a lot easier. The green dots and the shaded areas represent where those flow monitors are currently installed, and the shaded areas are the sub-basins that those flow monitors are capturing flow from. So you'll see we have a total of 27 flow monitors out there, and we're covering our entire system, all three basins. Next slide. This is a graph from the ADS system, and this was, this is showing you the impact of inflow and infiltration on our system from just one point of reference. And they were all like this. I can pull up any of those flow monitors and show you, they all saw a spike from this rain event, March 27th. To remind you, and unfortunately to remind myself, this was the rain event that overtopped the Coffey Dam out of the Heads Creek construction project and ended up with news coverage and all that. So the, I might get a little closer to see that. So the black line up on the upper part of the graph, you see it coming in from March 25th to 27th, pretty steady and flat. That's dry weather conditions, and then it shoots up. The level and the flow, the blue line is the flow. The black line up top is the level, the purple on the bottom is rainfall. So as soon as that rainfall hits, you see that it's immediate. That is telling us there's a huge source of inflow. And then you see how the flow stays up after the rainfall ceases. That tells us there's inflow and infiltration going on because now what is saturated in the ground is seeping into the system, not just pouring into it, and it's keeping those levels, the high-flow rate sustained. So two-pronged approach to dealing with that, you gotta. Ma'am. This is just one sub-basin in the Shoal Creek sewer basin. Yeah, so with three basins, 27 monitors, approximately seven to eight monitors per basin. I think we have like nine in Shoal Creek because it's the largest. This is just one sub-basin out, so this maybe represents one ninth of the Shoal Creek sewer basin. So you see the impact and what that does. So to just carry the point home, as that's coming down the pipe, it's coming to the plant. There's more energy expended with the equipment to treat it, to aerate, move, pump, et cetera. Also, the chemical costs incurred to treat it chemically so that we are meeting the parameters for discharge or land out. Next slide. So what do we plan to do about it? And Steve, will you confirm this last slide? Yeah, okay, we'll go back to that. So this is straight out of the updated wastewater management plans. This is our capital expenditures we plan to do per basin. This in the previous plan had, had a lot of concrete structures, right? A lot of interceptors, plants and stuff. We've accomplished most of all that and figured out what didn't need to be done and abandoned those ideas. Right now, we're focusing less on physical structure, more on rehabilitation maintenance of our existing structures. So the first thing we start off with in each one of our basins is update our sewer models. We need to have that tool updated so that we can use it for, for analysis and for planning. INI reductions and addressing sewer capacity. We're starting in the Shoal Creek Basin with a $2 million effort this year. That's what we've planned for this fiscal year and likely escalating over the next three years in the Shoal Basin. We also have the plant expansion to 5 MGD in the Shoal Basin. Our opinion of cost right now is $32.8 million for that. That will be a GFO sourced project, more than likely. We have in Buck Creek interceptor and pump station improvements, Honeybee Creek interceptor and pump station improvements in the Potato Creek Basin and plant expansion to 4 MGD. That is opinion of cost given of 8.2 because that will be an expansion, not a rebuild. And that's, we're planning for that in the year 2035 to 2039. So if you remember from a previous slide, our land use projections, how, how that interpolates to sewer flows is going to exceed the current rated capacity of the potato plant of 3.0 MGD, I believe it was 3.6 roughly. So we will need to address that down the road. Outside of that, it's, it's focusing on wastewater collection systems. We've got to get our collection system in a better state to serve our current customers and preserve what we have. There's the approach for dealing with capacity and INI is always going to be two-pronged. You're going to have to upsize capacity, but you also got to be chasing down these sources of infiltration, inflow and infiltration. So that's the name of the game moving forward and what we intend to do, barring any other regulatory issues that may come along down the road. So our, our effort on INI has largely been accomplished through CDVG projects where we've, and, and that, that actually has brought people onto the sewer system as well as addressed INI issues in some of our older areas that meet the guidelines for CDVG. But as great as CDVG is, it does limit us as to where we can spend our monies on the system. So we, we've accomplished 13 just since 2010, since the last update. I think we've had 18 in total, Chad might make more of them. Yeah, 15 out of 18 years. So we have really achieved a lot through CDVG, and we're continuing to. We're, we got one that you'll consider tonight in the Russian Mill areas and then one or two more iterations in that area, at least for water wastewater. But we, we need to get outside of what that boxes us into and start focusing our, our spending and investigation to abate INI in other areas that don't meet the parameters for CDVG.
You've given us a lot of information specifically, how this level is, say out loud, whether or not there's any issues dealing with the north side of town. Years, we've been asking, trying to get more sewer capacity on that side of town. A lot of people don't have, not connected to our sewer system and heard several reasons as to why. And I'm just wondering to address any of them.
We haven't, again, focused on sewer expansion, but it's not something outside of what we can look at. This, again, the plan is a guiding tool for our planning, but as, if, if there is good reason and desire to expand in the north side, we certainly. As uh if if there is good reason and desire to expand in the north side, uh we certainly. Can look at that and incorporate that into our plan. Um, north side of town will be served by combination of Cabin Creek Basin and Shoal Creek, depending on where you're at, which side of nineteen, basically. Um, there is so good capacity in the Cabin Creek Plant, so um we're not hamstrung with. Plant capacity issues, so uh the door should be open for consideration, definitely.
Doesn't end in not changing of our our area, our services. So that's an F D S discussion because right now we don't service that area. So if that wants to be changed and they want to be different customers, that would have to be an F D S.
Yeah, no, sorry. I assumed we were talking about within our service area. So yeah, definitely. Yeah. Any other questions?
What do we do about um infiltration? It's in like a private. Lawn. The trees.
Yeah.
What do we do about that?
Well, firstly, if it if it's in a private, so from that diagram, you saw roof drains, you know, connected, things like that. Um. That I don't expect to find a whole lot of that here in Griffin. Uh, you see more of that in other systems and other northern areas of the U S, but um. We have to find it first. Um, I mentioned there's a two-pronged approach to dealing with capacity. We have to expand. Um, upsize the lines, increase capacity through efforts like that in the system also while abating I N I. You can only hope to. Relieve yourself of maybe fifty percent max of what I N I you have coming in. There will always be some I N I coming in. Uh, you just can't source it all. You can't find it all, no matter how hard anybody has tried across the world. Um, you're gonna have it just like on a water system where you're gonna have probably ten percent water loss due to leakage. Um, so the inverse of that is happening in a sewer system. So once we find it. We'll deal with it the best way we can. If there's a large source of I N I from a private property, we'll have to work with those that owner. To address that issue.
Was considered a large.
This is probably not the answer because you probably want a fact and figure answer here, but the answer will be enough to impact our operations. And diminish capacity in the line. Any other questions? All right, thank y'all. Thanks again to Bear Gone team.
Okay, next we'll discuss the. That turning off the garden. Camera ready, leaves on Karen Bennett and planning and development director.
Good morning, everyone. So this has been a project that Karen uh wanted to tackle for a while. Obviously, this is a really good opportunity with the writer and actor strikes going on. So we're hoping to make these changes. And implement them so that when things go back into full swing, uh we won't have uh. We won't have any delay and we'll be able to operate under current market conditions for media production in Georgia. So we're really just going to go briefly over, does this work, Steve? So that I don't have to ask you. It does, okay. So we're briefly just going to go over what the changes are. Um, I. From my perspective, a lot of this is is mainly operational. Uh, some of it is in the change of the framework and what we're calling these uh types of permits. Previously, they were set up uh to be done on a uh if they were for seven days or less, they were considered low impact. And if they were for eight to fourteen days, they were considered high impact. However, uh as Karen noted, if they are doing a stunt scene where cars are on fire, I would consider that high impact whether they're here for one day or not. So we realized that we really needed to make some changes. Uh, and so Karen did a lot of research into other uh camera-ready municipalities across the state. Uh, and uh one of the other things that we noted in doing that, aside from the process. Was actually our fees were were significantly less, where we weren't charging for things that we could be charging for. And because of that framework, we were charging the same amount, whether they were here for seven days or the the fourteen days. There was only a minimal fee for that that daily amount. Um, and so we actually sat down with uh one of the, I guess he's considered a location scout. Yes, a location manager who has previously um done several projects within the city. And just asked, you know, if we went up on our fees, you know, to this amount, what would your response be? And uh he said fee wise, uh that wasn't really the problem. One of the main things that they had noted um. Was differing locations, ease of access for the information using an online portal. And some of the uh location agreement procedures that we had in place with uh some of our residents. Um, so I'll I'll get to that towards the end of this, but just to give you an idea, that's what sparked most of these changes. So with that being said, uh how we're approaching it now is that we will be doing a permit per location. So if they are filming uh down in front of Corner Cafe and they're out on the street, that would be considered a permit if it's closing sidewalks and roads. We would consider that to be a uh a high impact. And then if they're filming at Safe House indoors and they have a location agreement with Safe House to be able to do that. At that point, we would consider that to be low impact, but that would be a separate permit. Um, each permit will have a maximum life of seven calendar days. Um, so they're gonna be renewing. So they're gonna be renewing uh every every seven calendar days. That actually works for better for us and it works better for the producers. Because they typically are working on a seven day schedule anyway when it comes to budget and planning. Um, there will be a base fee, low impact versus high impact, and then there will be a daily permit fee that will be charged. Again, that that difference now, we're taking the days away from the low impact and high impact. They'll all have a maximum life of seven days. If they tell us they'll be here for three days. They'll pay a base fee. Um, if we're closing roads, if we're closing sidewalks, if there's going to be a heightened public safety presence. That's all going to be considered high impact. If they are not. Closing anything, if we're not needed, if they're in, you know, an alleyway and two people are standing out there with a camera, that's that's low impact. Um, so at that point, they're going to pay that low impact fee and then pay the the daily charge for however many days that they're at that location. So we are also adding a a few fees in addition to increasing some of the ones that we already have. So the high impact fee is going to be increased from two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. That's again, that base charge. Uh, the low impact fee will be staying the same. We are adding an expediting fee of of a hundred dollars if uh the application is submitted less than five days before filming. We have had requests uh through Karen and it and it requires a lot of work on her behalf. Uh, on really all of our staff who has to approve, including public works and public safety. Um, and as well as um the city manager's office and making sure that we can get those things signed off on in time. So that the intent of that fee is to make sure that, you know, we're compensated for the additional rush and kind of the change of operations. That an expedited request uh causes. We're also adding a drone and or crane request uh fee. Of fifty dollars that's added to the application review, and this is actually because Robert Mull, our airport director, has to review those types of requests and make sure. That uh it's not going to have any ear interference with airport operations. So that's intended to compensate for that administrative time. Uh, we are also adding use of public parking spaces. So um we have had circumstances where they'd need to set up on the, you know, on the street area. And replace supplies on those street areas um when we're closing down roads or otherwise. Uh, so this would be a ten dollar per day per space fee. The only exception would be city-owned or leased parking lots. Because we do actually have a separate agreement for those um where we would charge a separate fee that would be subject to a parking and location use agreement. We also wanted to add a sanitation bond. We have been very lucky that we have had producers who have gone, you know, jumped through hoops for the most part. And making sure that they're cleaning up after themselves. This would simply be a fee that we would charge on a bond basis to make sure that things were cleaned up. If for any reason they left trash or any other items within the road, this would allow solid waste and public works to be able uh to be compensated if we had to send staff out. To go uh and fix those issues. If it if we have no issues, that money would be returned at the end of filming when the permit was completed. And we are also adding an amendment fee of fifty dollars per permit plus any additional charges. So if they come back and they say we're going to be here for. Uh, for an additional fourteen days, that's really an additional permit. Um, and so that may not necessarily be an amendment fee, but if they told us they were going to be here for two days. And it turns out they're going to be here for an entire week, we would have, you know, additional charges that would go uh for the daily fees. And we also need to assess whether or not we need additional public safety presence, how that changes operations. And so all of these fee changes are really intended to make sure that we are actually compensated for the time that staff has to take away from their operations. We want this to be something that's adding to, you know, the the city, something that we're kind of offering to the state uh and to our own local economy. But we also don't want it to be, you know, to the detriment of of staff and the rest of the citizens who live here every day. Based on some of my research, yes, ma'am. Yeah, there is. In fact, uh they were like, you know, I think we we ended up erring on the side of caution in implementing this because they said you could go up a lot more than that. We were like, well, you know, we're we're we don't want to jump, you know, our our main thing is wanting to make sure that we're being compensated from an administrative perspective. Um, but the we we were significantly behind, but there had been no changes uh to the ordinance in quite some time. So this this is really putting us kind of on par with where I think we are in this uh in media production across the state. It's done by location now, yes. And that is, that has been different. We we did not previously do that. That is a change to that framework. But you can have one location that's low impact and one location that's high impact. And in reality, we're splitting our resources. So we may have to have a police presence at both locations, but we were only being compensated for one. So this is intended to deal with that. We're also adding a student waiver, which I know Karen is very excited about, uh because we do have two film programs at local schools. Uh, both Southern Crescent Technical College and Gordon State. Uh, so this would allow us to waive uh fees associated with low impact permits. So it would not be for a high impact project that is closing down a street or where they're, you know, doing a car stunt in the center of the road. But if a student was pulling a low impact permit within the city, this would allow them to pull that permit without having to pay all the fees that a a regular producer would. Um, we do have a limitation that it it. Has to be for a class and for a grade. Uh, so they would need to submit all that paperwork uh to Karen. And so this is the area that um was actually quite shocking to me. Uh, you know, they didn't necessarily care about the fees, but the media producers did have a complaint. That as Georgia has become a hotspot for media production. When they first came here, people were very excited and people were very on board and they were they were entering into these location agreements with businesses and residents. Uh, who may be impacted by their filming and they really do a a great job at attempting to communicate and even being um flexible with these business owners. In these agreements that they come to. So if it looks like they're losing more revenue for the day that they're going to be closed because it's a Saturday versus, you know, a Monday. They're they take that into account and they're they're willing to work with those businesses and those residents. Um, but as it's become more popular, it's also that that relationship has become a source of of abuse and there really isn't another word for it. Um, so certain businesses would hold out. Knowing that if everyone else had agreed and they were the only holdout that were holding up production, these production companies are losing losing money by the day. They would be able to get a extorted increased fine or in increased fee paid to them that was significantly higher than their neighbors. And so that created animosity between the neighbors and it 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 created a lot of a lot of issues within our office. And interestingly, it was never actually codified. Our our policy that we've implemented thus far has been. That notices provided to all residents, but they must, all residents who are impacted, but they must actually provide proof. That all of those residents have agreed and consented, every single one, not a single holdout. And that's never actually been in our code, but it's been a policy that we've enforced and the production companies have been understanding about it. Um, but we realize that it has, it has caused issues and it has, you know, held things up and it has created animosity between neighbors who say, well, they got this much and. You know, and I didn't. Uh, so our our goal after speaking with the uh with the producer who gave us some some uh. Some information on kind of his experience, both here and in other cities. Was that we want to make it where all impacted areas and all impacted residents, businesses are notified still. However, we're only requiring that they show proof that two thirds have consented. And that is actually in a a procedure that is very common in other areas. The only place where we did have it codified was actually in private neighborhoods, um not even necessarily neighborhoods that were on public streets. And we had that they had to notify everyone and we simply encouraged them to get consent from as many people as possible. Um, so this this is sort of a variation of that and would apply in in all areas. Notice would need to be provided and we are still encouraging the producers. To to make contact with those residences outside of just that initial notice and to try to enter into a consent with everyone. And they know that they have a better chance of appeasing you and appeasing the citizens. Uh, if they are are continuing to maintain that relationship. And so I'm hopeful that this change will sort of be a happy medium to make sure that we're not creating conflict between. The 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 other businesses and residents within an area and Karen has been fantastic in communicating. With those businesses and residents as well as the producers. Um, we we tell them we do not interfere. If you are entering into an agreement to rent out your business space, that that is a a deal between private parties. But to the extent that it crosses out into the public uh public area or that a producer did not. Properly communicate with a business about how long their area was going to be closed. Um, we we've had great success in saying, first of all, an apology is in order and having that producer come and sit down and say, how can I do better next time? So that really completes the changes and we're happy to answer any questions. Karen can give you some more hypothetical real life examples if you do have have need for those.
Okay, next we'll consider going to executive section, pursuant to O C B A section fifty fourteen dash three. The one. The for the purpose of authorizing negotiations, purchases of the lease property pursuant to O C B A fifty dash fourteen. Two, section one for the permit of consulting and meeting legal counsel pertaining to ending or potential litigation. Some claim administrative decisions or other judicial action brought. Uh, or to be brought by. Agency, officer or employee. In the agency. Or any officer, employee directly. And directly involved with pursuant to O C B A section fifty eight fourteen dot three. Two, for the purpose of discussing liberating uh finally appointment. Employment compensation hiring, disbyaction or dismissal or or periodic evaluation of rating of a proper officer or employee.
We are actually going to stay out here for the first um. Probably acquisitions. So for those that are not participating in that, they're going to step out, they're going to lock that door.